We'll call the order, the Board of County Commissioners for Douglas County, Nebraska for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We'll start with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fahy.
Commissioner Friend.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chair. Here. First item of business are items A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and B being the call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion by Roger, second by Fahy. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have one protest item, item C. A protest of penalty for personal property taxes for complete behavioral health at 4565 South 133rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. Assessor Goodwilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. This protest was the result of an estimate assessment that we sent out. This business had filed a return for 2024 in which it listed in excess of $16,000 worth of personal property on its return. It filed nothing in '25, and so we prepared an estimate assessment by taking what they reported the previous year, taking a further year of depreciation to get to the correct class life or net book value, and sent out the penalty assessment or estimate assessment. And the taxpayer filed a protest and also filed a return that indicated, to me at least, that she didn't quite understand net book value. So I reached out to her and we chatted. Apparently, she changed accountants. Her new accountant didn't bother to file. And after explaining it to her, she sent me an email back saying, "I completely understand the estimated depreciation, given my new accountant failed to file the necessary forms. I agree with the estimated adjustment around $12,900." All in, the taxes on her estimate assessment would be about $262, and there's a late filing or a late penalty for another 66. So all in, she's, the taxpayer is looking at $328, but it appears that she's not interested in pursuing the protest. I think the clerk's office reached out to her to see if she would send them something to that effect and has been unable to reach the taxpayer, which is kind of often the case. Anyway, I would advocate that the appeal be, or the protest be dismissed. We seem to have worked that out with the taxpayer.
Thank you. Where's the will of the board?
Motion to move.
Or, yeah, motion to dismiss the protest. Yep. By Roger, second by Kavanaugh. And we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, items D, E, and F under equalization, which we can take and block if desired.
Uh, so moved.
Uh, well, there's a, there's a public hearing item G afterwards, so we'll hold off an adjournment, but we'll do items D through F as motion by Rogers. Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, second by Morgan. Discussion, anybody from the public come to speak on items D, E, or F on the resolutions for equalization? Anybody from board? Otherwise, we'll vote. Thank you. Next, we have, under public hearing, a resolution to correct the Fremont Public Schools tax levy from amount originally approved on the October 14th, 2025 resolution. Since it's a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this point, and I know Mr. Clerk had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan S., Douglas County Clerk. So just a brief explanation. For school districts, on their bonds, they can use a different total taxable valuation than what they would use for their general fund or their special building fund. And this was a case where Fremont had intended to use a slightly different value, total taxable value for three of their bonds. So this corrects it to the amount that they had meant to submit to us. The tax dollars requested that were approved on the 14th, it's the same amount now. It's just what's different is the, that was correct, but we had to, we had to correct the total valuations being used on three of their bonds and then also update the levy for them. So basically, the levy goes from, for Fremont Public Schools, 1.064464 to, excuse me, that's, that's what is going to be approved today. And what was approved was 1.065889 on the 14th. So, yeah, Fremont just has a small footprint in, you know, it's, school districts are interesting to me, they've got, you know, they cross over into different counties and they just have a small footprint in Douglas County, so that's why they're before us. They're headquartered in Dodge, but they do have a footprint in Douglas. So, anyway, that needed to be corrected, and that's why it's before you today.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from board or public? If not, I will close the public hearing. Where's the will of the board?
Motion to approve by Roger, second by Morgan.
Please vote.
Mr. Chair, is that included adjournment?
Uh, plus adjournment? Yep. Okay. Yes. Thank you. That adjourns Board of Equalization. We will now go into Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fahy.
Right.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Do I have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion by Roger, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll invite Director Myers for the Corrections Report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have in, before you your, my report for the month of September of 2025. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. Following the third month of the fiscal year, we are pleased to report that we are $1,180,795 under budget. I do want to point out that we have some significant expenditures relating to projects that yet to get underway that will eat away at some of that surplus. There were $366,241 spent on overtime costs in September. That is a reduction of about $200,000 from the previous month. Nearly $800,000 in bond payments were processed by our Records Division. We did have a high month for attrition in September as 12 officers below the rank of sergeant left employment. There were a variety of reasons for that. A few were our choice, a few were their choice. One chose, you know, we had an officer who had a child who decided to stay, to leave the profession due to that. So it was a variety of reasons that kind of culminated in a higher month for attrition for us. 16 officers have, in fact, began the training academy on October 14th, and as of September 30th, we were 99% staffed among all correctional officer ranks. Turning to enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 21 individuals into community corrections and saved 109 combined bed days in the jail. Pardon me. Work release admitted 19 individuals and house arrest admitted 49. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 23. 49 individuals were admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 123 individuals on the GED waitlist, and we have 73 active students in GED. We did have a very good month for GED as five individuals achieved their GED while in custody. 15 individuals were referred to intensive outpatient treatment, and 27 individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. In pretrial services, there were 291 individuals that were placed on pretrial release during September. 1,390 were supervised on pretrial release over the course of the month. 532 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program, and 181 of these individuals were supervised via GPS monitors, saving 4,020 bed days theoretically. Also theoretically, pretrial release saved Douglas County $683,400 in detention costs in September. Pretrial services staff are working with a new vendor for pretrial release software regarding several aspects of the program. And I am pleased to report, since I'm giving this report later in the month, that that project has gone live successfully on the 14th of this month. So I look forward to myself learning more about the capabilities of this system from my staff in the pretrial program and being able to provide you much more robust reporting on that program moving forward. Enclosure number three, Compliance. We continue to record all compliance-related data. Our PRIA, or Prison Rape Elimination Act, audit will occur later this year. I have learned since I typed this report, it is scheduled for the first week of December. The National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHC, audit will occur at an undetermined date in 2026, and the American Correctional Association audit will occur sometime later in 2026. It will be either during October or November. Enclosure number four, Population. We had 1,401 admissions. There were 1,427 releases. Our high count was 1,151, and our low count was 1,071. We had an average daily population of 1,111. That is an increase of 18. The average length of stay for inmates who were released in December, the overall average was 25 days. 50, 51.3% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours, and for those individuals, their average length of stay was 51.5 days. 48.7% of inmates were released in under 72 hours, and their average length of stay was 1.3 days. There were 74 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population increased. The average felony pretrial population was 760, which is an increase of 21. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 136, was, which was a slight increase. Our pop, our probation violations decreased. 20% of our population was between the ages of 18 and 24. 60% 66% of our population were minorities. 16% of our population were female, and 18% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Turning to enclosure number five, Medical and Mental Health. There were 1,111 intake screenings. There were 423 health and physical assessments. We had a busy month for emergency medical care as 37 individuals were taken out for emergency medical care. 10 of those were by 911. Eight resulted in hospitalizations totaling a combined days of 20, a combined total days of hospitalization of 27. There were 33 off-site specialty appointments. We had 148 initial psychiatric assessments, 100, 359 initial mental health assessments, 119 individuals were placed on suicide precautions, 179 individuals were placed on alcohol and drug detox protocols. Three Board of Mental Health referrals were approved. We have 17 individuals waiting to go to the Lincoln Regional Center. Encouragingly enough, we do already have 25 individuals at the Lincoln Regional Center, and five individuals were administered a combined total of 11 doses of either Narcan or Ophi in September. Turning to enclosure number six, our Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our Crisis Negotiation Team was deployed nine times in September, several of which were in conjunction with our Emergency Management Team, or CERT. Issues included one quarter court-ordered cell extraction of a mentally ill individual who is refusing to go to court, several housing unit transfers of individuals who were displaying aggressive or destructive behavior, medical, and medically mandated showers. Two of these incidents required physical force to complete the objective. Our Emergency Response Team, or CERT, was deployed 10 times in September. Several were in conjunction with the Crisis Negotiation Team. Issues addressed two court-ordered cell extractions, medically mandated showers, a mentally ill inmate who claimed to have a weapon, and housing unit transfers. One particularly challenging incident involved an individual who had covered themselves in feces and was refusing to shower. One injury to an inmate was reported during these 10 deployments. Intermediate weapons, including pepper spray and our glove and stun shield, were required in two of these incidents. We had 14 area searches conducted. Recovered contraband included a shampoo bottle with a brown unidentified substance, an eyedrop bottle containing an unidentified white liquid, torn clothing, a shower drain plate, and papers with Cash App and social media usernames. The Honor Guard supported the funeral services of a fallen officer in the Kansas City area in September. I'm including some data now on injuries to staff. We had three staff members who were assaulted in September, two who were injured during use-of-force incidents, and six who were injured during training. And that'll become, make a little more sense when I get to the end of my report as to why we had the, the training injuries. Enclosure number seven, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. There were 138 applications received for correctional officer positions, and 17 interviews were conducted. 21 cadets graduated the academy on September 12th, and as I mentioned, 16 began the academy on October 14th. TAP, the Tactical Athlete Program Training, is ongoing for all custody staff. Noncustody staff will receive a one-day self-defense version of TAP. We hope to have all new, all of our staff trained in our new self-defense and use-of-force model by the end of the year. Policy updates regarding TAP and Strategic Inmate Management, or SIM, are being completed. 15 staff members utilized the Wellness and Retention Office, and two of our staff members were referred to external mental health resources. One thing that was pretty cool this month is we had our first Corrections Wellness Fair. Our Wellness and Retention Specialist, Bill Young, organized this. We had 10 community partners come down and set up booths or tables. Anything from mental health services to financial services and kind of everything in between were offered to our staff. The, the event was highly successful, and these partner agencies that came to interact with our staff indicated this was one of the most well-attended events of its kind that they had participated in. Other noteworthy items, we continue to train our staff in the Tactical Athlete Program, and we are on pace to have all, all staff trained by early next year. I believe that TAP is a safer and more holistic approach to self-defense and use of force. Our leadership team is also going through the four-day training, so we are educated on it, and we can probably properly evaluate incidents requiring force. I completed this training myself a few weeks ago. It was quite rigorous. I have not wrestled on a mat for many years, but I did four days of it, and I can tell you, I was awfully glad when it was done. It was a grueling four days, and that is what's responsible for the six staff injuries in training, because you do have to go somewhat live in order to teach these techniques and make them usable. A little bit about TAP real quick, going off script a little bit, well, I guess I kind of have this, I'll just keep reading. TAP emphasizes de-escalation and overall health of our, health and fitness for our staff. The techniques that are taught de-emphasize pain compliance and focus on physical control of individuals to accomplish objectives. These techniques involve working as a team with other officers and other scenarios that are realistic to correctional, correctional settings. Are, the model that we are phasing out, and it's going to take some time to phase this out, because people have been trained in it for many years, and we know that in the heat of the moment, you know, what's, what may come to their mind may be the, the previous model. The previous model, Pressure Point Control Tactics, or PPCT, emphasized pain compliance and, and strikes to nerves, and so even well-done, well-executed uses of force, you know, they, they didn't look that, they weren't pretty to watch. The TAP program de-emphasizes that, using a lot more emphasis on leverage. It was actually a program that was developed by UFC fighters. It's based a lot on Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and it's been adapted for law enforcement purposes. And I think it'll be safer for our inmate population and safer for our staff, and it's been very well-received. As an executive team, we have made adjustments to our staffing levels for less critical posts. We have reduced staffing in our lobby due to a significant decrease in foot traffic as a result of the tablets being accessible to everyone and, and video visitation becoming very affordable. We reduced posts in central control, attorney-clergy visitation, and our courtroom to previous levels after having had increased them to address specific circumstances which are no longer present. Through attrition, we chose not to fill one reentry specialist position and one records position. And although altogether these reductions have resulted in, in, in the reduction of 11 FTEs, and I wanted to assure everyone that no one was laid off, our staff were assigned to more critical functions. These changes were made in large part to efficiencies we've made through technology and other operational changes. I believe there are other changes we can make without compromising the, the mission of DCDC nor the, the safety and security of the facilities. However, for the moment, we will monitor the impact of the current changes on our personnel budget before making further adjustments. These changes were meant, were made in an attempt to bring out the personnel portion of our budget in line, and also made with an eye towards the next fiscal year, when I present my budget, and I will be asking for some additional staff to operate the mental health addition. Lastly, we are approaching our second Lasting Legacy Award Ceremony, and work is underway on the permanent display where awardees will be honored. The Lasting Legacy honors former employees of DCDC who made it a better place. The award is open to all ranks and roles. Nominees for the award must have worked for DCDC for at least 15 years and left employment in good standing in order to be considered. Our second induction to Lasting Legacy will be held on November 13th at 10:00 a.m. at the jail, where six more of our former staff will be honored. These ceremonies will be held going forward on an annual basis during Corrections Week, and I will make sure I get an invitation out to you all. That, we did our first one during Corrections Week in May, and it was one of the coolest things that I've seen in our facility in, in some time. So with that, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. We're going to go into discussion, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just real quick, Mike, a few of the metrics. Average daily population, 1,111, up 18. Just nominal, I guess.
Not, not life-changing, no.
Average length of stay, 25 days. About half, 48%, or 72 hours or less. The page six on revenues is interesting. It would be, I guess, easier if there was like a grand total at the bottom of those And I have one question. We do this jail housing with the city and the U.S. Marshals, and then we do jail housing other and jail housing other agencies. Who are, what are those?
Those may be other counties that oftentimes, it's not uncommon for circumstances to warrant moving somebody from one county to another county for their safety based upon who else might be in the jail that, in their, their county where they're from. So that, that's a give and take. That's an expenditure and a revenue, because we do that as well sometimes.
Okay. And we have significant revenue from a quarter of a million dollars annually, it looks like, from house arrest program fees. How exactly does that work?
So we have, there are, there's fees to go on house arrest, so when you go on house arrest, you have to be on a GPS monitor and usually an alcohol monitor as well. And so we are basically collecting the fees. We have to pay the vendor to provide the equipment and the, the.
Okay, so the individual pays the county, and the county pays the vendor.
Correct.
Do you have any idea what those run?
I can, I can get that.
Okay.
That used to be my wheelhouse when I was in Community Corrections.
What if somebody's indigent and is unable to pay?
Then they won't have to pay.
The bond payments that you mentioned that are coming due, which bond issues are those?
Those are bond, bonding people out of jail.
Oh, bonding, not bond payments.
Correct.
The majority-minority population is 66. It seems like that might be up a tick, but it remains majority-minority by a lot.
Correct.
And again, that's nothing you can control, but it's troubling for our community to have that consistent majority-minority population behind bars. On page 44, custodial sanctioned beds, there's a spike in that going back to, you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, that, that is, so custodial sanctions are a result of legislation that happened about 10 10 years ago, where now, prior to revoking somebody's probation, they can be sent to jail for a period of time as a sanction for some violation. They, probation in the early years of that utilized it quite a bit more. When COVID pandemic affected everybody's operations, probation thankfully relied on them much less, and they continue to maintain that low level of utilization. So it is, whereas we used to have like 500 bed days a month, we typically run around 100 bed days a month now.
Next time. Yep, we'll go to Commissioner Fahy.
Myers, thank you for the report. And I apologize if I missed this, but so was it, were the, were the six training injuries resulted during the TAP training?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is that, is that normal? Is that acceptable?
It, it, it is, given the nature of this training, and it's a new program for everybody, and they're having to go through four days of it, and these injuries were pretty, by and large, minor. Nobody missed any work, but we, anytime anybody fills out an injury packet, it gets included in our statistics. They, this, it's not unexpected. I mean, four days of this type of hand-to-hand, you know, physical training involving takedowns and so forth, and you're putting, we're putting, you know, we have over 400 correctional staff, uniform correctional staff that are going through it. It is not unexpected to have some bumps and bruises that people have reported.
Fair. And some of this, I'll plead ignorance, that I don't understand the minimal threshold for filling out an injury report, but we'll speak to that first, if you could.
Sure. So, you know, the kind of, there are some staff that if they get, you know, whether it's something that's on the job or in training, you know, if they, they end up with a scrape or a bruise or, you know, a sore shoulder after a use-of-force incident, you know, they'll be, "I'm fine, I don't need to fill out a packet." Others, there really isn't a stamp, we don't refuse anybody filling it out, because if they, you know, if they wake up the next day and can't get out of bed, or their arm, or, you know, like swelling has developed, you know, they, when they fill that out, then, you know, work comp will cover those expenses that they have for the, for the treatment of those injuries. So it is a pretty low threshold to fill those out.
That's fair. I mean, I still, you know, this many levels removed from it, seeing six injuries in a month is alarming to me, you know.
Right.
Understanding I'm not there, so certainly I would, I would, I would expect that six injuries would warrant an examination of the training, but I also can defer that if the injuries didn't result in any missed work time. But, you know, going forward, I, you know, it just, it gives me some pause.
Yeah. And this is a, you know, this is a training that not everybody's going to go through all the time like we're doing right now. You know, we're getting everybody trained in the new, the new model. So the volume of people going through the training is the highest it will ever be, you know, right now through early January. And then there will be like a two-day recertification that people will do, kind of sporadically, annually, it'll be spread out, and over the course of the rest of their employment.
Okay.
And so we will see, just by the volume, more injuries now and less later on.
Okay. That's helpful to me, I appreciate it. I just, you know, please understand that me sitting here seeing six injuries in a month sort of automatically creates a concern for...
Understood.
...county employee safety, but I'm comfortable with your responses. I have another matter I want to ask about, but I'll, I'll yield the 30 seconds and we'll come back to it...
Sure.
...after whoever's next.
Very good, thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mike. I think you said about 18% were homeless, which would be roughly 200...
Correct.
...the individuals being incarcerated would be homeless?
Yes.
If you look back six years, which is six months before the COVID, what do you think that number, because I know you were there and...
Yes.
...working hard at it?
You know, that, that number has been remarkably stable. It has, pre-COVID, post-COVID, I feel I look at that number every month, and it is almost exactly the same every month. It is, it is that 18 to maybe 21% range is what I always report, and ever since we started tracking that, it's, it's pretty entrenched. It's kind of similar to the racial demographic. It's, they just seem to be entrenched numbers that...
So that, that seems interesting to me, that that number has remained pretty constant in that range, whether you go back six years or not, you're running close to that...
Right.
...18 to 20% homeless in our correction facility. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it.
We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Following up on Commissioner Morgan's question right there, what would that be in numbers, not percentages?
Around 200, give or take.
So 200 is the, 20% of the population at 1,100, you know, 200 and change, but...
Yeah.
Is that consistent?
It is very consistent.
Month to month, year to year?
Yes, it is.
That's amazing, yeah, that's not good. A couple of things, and these are just more following up on some conversations we've had over time regarding format. If you go to pages like seven and eight, this is something that I think that we've talked about, and it looks like maybe it got done in a fashion and then maybe wasn't carried through. So if you look at pages seven and eight, what we were looking for is a look-back period on these, and on page seven...
Commissioner, I believe it is.
It's got a look back.
Yeah, it goes from June 24.
But on page eight, starting with overtime and continuing through the balance of that, the...
Do you have to look at page seven as the look back, and page eight? We haven't had data for October.
Okay.
The current, the current fiscal year is on page eight.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's ongoing.
Okay. The, the look-back period, and I don't know if this is just because the info doesn't come in that quickly, seems to go back from, from June to July. So that's, that's a look back, a fiscal year look back, is that what you're saying?
So page seven is the 20, the fiscal year '25 data, so that goes from June, July of '24 to June of '25. So this is a, this is just taking a page out of a report I would have given you a year ago, or actually at the end of, not a year ago, in July.
Because if you go forward to page 31 and following, those are look backs September to September. And I'm just saying, I understand the fiscal year format. I'm more probably looking at, we're doing this this September, what did we do last September? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, our population graphs, you know, basically, some of them are set up to track the past year, and they're rolling, a month drops off and another one adds every, every month. Some of them have multiple years tracked with different...
So kind of what I would be looking for is, you know, a 12-month period from now back, so I could say, okay, you know, this September, we were, we're there, last September, we were there. It's the same, it's higher, it's lower, you know what I'm, I'm looking for patterns going back. I think there's pretty consistent variations in population, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe in August and maybe sometime during the winter, where populations tend to go up or down in a particular way.
Yeah, we tend to peak around this time of year, and then grad, have some, though those changes are not as pronounced as they used to be.
And that's what I'm looking for, any changes, or is the pattern still the same? And then if there was a change, you know, why is that?
Well, I believe the, the reason those changes are not as pronounced is our pre-trial release program has mitigated those spikes that we would see in some of those warm-weather months.
And then on page 34, this is very good news, the bed days saved by pre-trial GPS, you know, in the thousands, and that times our per diem is in the millions, and so that's a huge savings, good work.
Thank you.
Next time, we'll go to Commissioner Fahy.
Director Myers, thank you again. On the noteworthy items, just a couple of questions on the, sorry, the staffing regarding reduced posts for central control, attorney-clergy, and then courtroom. Specifically on the, on the attorney-clergy and the tablets, can you just...
Sure.
...fill me in a little bit on how that's working in terms of attorney visits with tablets?
So, well, two separate, and I'm sorry if I confuse these a little bit. So our attorney-clergy, that's face-to-face, and we had an additional officer placed in attorney-clergy when our records department was running short on staff, and they could not, our records department is responsible for running the virtual court hearings, which are also operated in the attorney-clergy area. So when our records department's a smaller department, fewer employees, when they were running short, we added an officer to help run virtual court. Now, the records has staffed up, we pulled that second officer out of attorney-clergy. So that's, that is an area where the attorneys come and visit face-to-face. The tablets, there, there are a lot of visits that happen with attorneys over the tablets as well, but that, but that is separate from the attorney-clergy staffing. That, basically, the, these tablets have enabled us to reduce the staffing in our front lobby from three people being present to two, because we, I would walk through that lobby, you know, multiple times every day, and I would see no one, you know, and because, and we've seen, the tablets, you know, are, the vendor that we switched to a couple of years ago, remote visitation was a very inaccessible and expensive proposition a few years back. Now, every single inmate has their own tablet, and the visitation is less than 10 cents a minute. It recently changed due to some federal regulations, but it's less than 10 cents a minute, which is much cheaper probably for individuals than getting in their car and driving down, trying to find a place to park downtown and using the video visitation that's on-site, even though the video visitation that's on-site is free of charge. It's just not worth the effort when you're spending, you know, a dollar and a half to do a 15-minute visit with your loved one versus the, taking the trouble to come all the way downtown.
Thank you, that's helpful, appreciate it.
All right, any other, oh, Commissioner Borgeson?
Can you, on page two, we were supposed to have the go-live date of October 14 for the pre-trial, but now you're, the next sentence says a more robust set of elements.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I, let me reread that. Yes, so the, that was meant to be read as if that, once this goes live, I will be able to give you more data. And it just, it did just go live a couple of weeks ago, so in subsequent months, I will be able to provide, I don't know how much of it I'll incorporate into the monthly report, because I know I already cover a wide variety of information, but maybe a periodic in-depth report, maybe quarterly or twice a year that we present to the board on this program, where we're able to start tracking the rates of failure to appears, you know, people with different interventions, and how people at different risk levels are doing on pre-trial release. Those are things that have been difficult, because our current, the system we initially utilized failed to deliver on some of its promises, and it, and the new one is integrating with court, you know, with justice and other court systems, so that we can get that data pushed back and forth.
Okay, well, and I would be interested in a pretty in-depth report, because we continually hear misinformation about our pre-trial program.
Yep.
And having that data out there, I think, is important...
Yes.
...for us and the success of the program as well.
Absolutely.
So, and then, secondly, on page two, when you talk about 51.3% of the inmates staying longer than the 72 hours, what would you say are the top three reasons why someone would stay longer than need be?
They, they're charged with a crime that doesn't, they're not going to get out on time served in two days, you know, and, and their, and their bond is set to a level that they cannot pay. Our pre-trial release program has mitigated that issue somewhat, but there are, you know, certain people that they're charged with serious enough crimes that the jail is where they're supposed to be, you know, and so mainly, I would say it is a combination of indigency mixed with higher levels of charges that were, you know, the very few, almost everybody gets a bond. There are very few charges where the judge doesn't, has the discretion to not set a bond. Over 99% of our people have a bond, but some of them are justifiably set quite high in order to maintain custody of those individuals pre-trial.
And that would be a data point that I think would be interesting, is how many of our individuals are sitting there because they can't pay their bond?
Yeah.
That, that, if you can get that...
In theory, Commissioner, that's probably almost everyone that's in jail that's on a pre-trial status, because every, if almost everybody gets a bond set, some of them, they might have to come up with $50,000, $100,000 or more, because they're, they might be charged with a gun crime or things like that. It, you know, there are some, you know, in the, in the population data, there are pre-trial misdemeanors. We averaged 136 of those a day. Those are in large part domestic violence, where there is mandatory minimum bond set, so that the, you know, the misdemeanor population would be the one to really look at, but you also have to understand that that, the domestic violence aspect of that requires a mandatory minimum bond.
Right. And I think, again, that data would be interesting to see and watch over time.
Yep.
But otherwise, that's, that's all my questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board or public on the director's report? If not, Director Myers, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I think what is missing from the report is a project management chart for the constructions happening in the...
Corrections?
If the director can provide it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn Board of Corrections.
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, please vote.
Commissioner Friend is absent at the moment.
Thank you. We'll go into, this kind of Board of Commissioners, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Friend is absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business, our items 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners being held Tuesday, October 14, 2025, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 28, 2025. Do I have a motion to second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, please vote. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Please note the items A and C have been tabled for later by request of the respective department. Therefore, we have remaining items B, D, E, and F, which I'll take a motion to second for discussion.
Second.
Motion approved by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll jump into discussion, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
You mentioned item E.
A and C are tabled. Everything else is still here.
I have a question for item C.
Okay.
This is a Health Department issue, and I don't know if somebody's here that could speak to it, but in item E, number seven, is the Second Amendment with Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services regarding updating award amount for Women Infant and Children Grant through September 30, 2025, and it's got an amount of $3,876,176.85 budgeted for basically food, breastfeeding support, and other things for moms and kids up to the age of five. In the backup documents, it shows that this appears to reflect a reduction from 4.6 million to 3.8 million in this grant amount, and I'm just curious why there is a reduction, what appears to be a reduction in this grant.
Okay. So, a winner from the Health Department on Zoom. Otherwise, Commissioner Rogers, I don't expect you to know that micro detail, but if you have any...
No, and I was out of town. At the last meeting, Mike's standing in the office.
Commissioner Rogers, sorry, can we get his mic on? Thank you.
Okay. No, I don't know the detail of it, but I do know there was some plan reduction... reduction, but not being at the meeting, I'd have to ask the director for the specifics on that.
Because I know there's been some federal reductions in like the SNAP program and other food programs for people in need of support, and I'm just wondering if this is part and parcel of that. Also, I think the state has done some reducing on their own, State Department of HHS and these kinds of support programs. And, you know, it would be good to know if that's what is happening here. I think people should know that.
I can say it's federal reduction. I don't know specifically because the grant is literally a pass through, through the state. And so I do know it's that. I don't know the details on it, but I do know it has implications of that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to lay this over or anything, but if you could find out, maybe, I think the public should know that we're cutting back on moms and kids, food and breastfeeding support.
I'll have it for you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on consent agenda from board or public? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That takes us to section five, recognitions, proclamations. We have one, item A, recognition of a county employee retirement for Marlo Ibarra, who worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 24 years. I don't think Marlo's here today, but we want to thank Marlo for the dedicated service to our Douglas County constituents and citizens for 24 years at the health center. With that, I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. We'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That takes us to section seven, public hearing, of which we have one item, item A, which is to waive the three readings required, requirement, and then consider and approve a proposed golf cart ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within SID 578 Westboro Creek in Douglas County. At this point, I will open the public hearing for this item. It was, I believe, laid over from a past meeting, so if there's any comments from public or board on this item, now would be the time. If not, I will close the public hearing. And Teresa, remind me, do we need the two motion process?
Yes, you'll need, Treseer County Attorney's Office, you'll need two votes, two motions, two votes, and the first will be whether to waive the three readings, and you'll need six commissioners to agree with that. And then if that, if you get that sixth vote, then you can move on to adopting the ordinance.
All right. So first motion is to waive the third reading or the three readings in general. Motion by Borgeson, second by Morgan. Vote on that.
Okay. And these are, these have to be voice votes. So Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
And the next motion would be to approve the actual resolution itself or the ordinance itself. Motion by Borgeson, second by Morgan, and by statute, I have to read the title, which again was a proposed golf cart ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within SID 578 in Westboro Creek in Douglas County. With that, we'll vote on it.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That takes us into committees. Under section eight, we have finance with budget report as presented, as well as the monthly fee report also as presented. Under human resources, we have the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, and one resolution regarding our flexible savings accounts. Was there any comment on that before we take it up? Or I'll take a motion to second first and then ask for comment. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Any comments on the item? If not, we can vote. Oh, yeah, I think we got that. Yep. Motion approved was by Rogers and second was by Morgan, so we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Today, we do not have a need for executive session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Rogers, second by Fahy. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 9:54 a.m.
Thank you.